That's okay, you can do the pledge, I'll die.
All right.
Okay.
We'll do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Kate, we'll take a second to get the audio working.
Please enter your password or moderator access code at the console. The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Okay, we'll start. First item on the agenda is to ratify the, to ratify the agenda. Any comments, additions, deletions?
I think additions as well, right?
Yep.
I would like to add on to rescind my motion from the last meeting on the PERS match.
Okay.
I made the motion.
Okay.
Commissioner Marsh seconded it. There was some research done and it wasn't correct and we'll make it correct during this meeting.
Okay.
Yep.
Anything else?
Also like to add the department heads and how they account for their time and communicate. And third of all, do we need to address the part-time parks in this meeting as well?
Your honor, roll, keep going. Anything else? Anybody? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Commissioner Marsh. Get a second?
A second.
By Commissioner Clarence, Claris, Clarence. Any further discussion?
That'd have been a tough question if you told me the name of Clarence Clarence.
Okay, all in favor of approving the agenda as modified, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Minutes, we have a couple, several to approve. You have before you the minutes from the December 30th special meeting. Chance to review. Entertain a motion to approve the December 30th minutes as submitted.
Make motion to approve the December 30th minutes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carry, carry. Kate, January 7th, regular meeting of the county commission.
I think there should be a correction in the beginning where it says Chairman Master called to me, I actually called the meeting order then.
Any other changes, corrections? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the January 7th minutes as amended.
I'll make that motion with one change in.
Okay, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion second, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, we have the January 14th minutes in front of you.
On, on that 14th minute, minutes, the 2024 budget adjustments for the road department, is that going to be rescinded today, right? Is that correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the January 14th meeting minutes.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the January 14th minutes. All in favor, say aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries.
Can I interrupt you for a second here?
Sure.
Going back to the one where we were discussing the portfolios and it suggested Marsh moved to Rough Rider North Social Service Board, but didn't Paul say that he wanted that?
The Rough Rider one?
Yep.
That went to Dean.
No, I took.
Oh, Dean did. Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, I didn't see that in here, but that's, yeah, there it is, I see it now. Okay, sorry about that.
Okay, now we'll go to accounts payable. And I was going to ask it during the road department. So, the equipment purchase that is in the, that completes all of the pending equipment purchases that are out there, correct?
Isn't. There's one more truck coming up.
One more truck.
That was in the budget for 25.
All right, thank you.
Is it walk and rolls from 2024? They're still coming too, 25. Okay. Make a motion to approve accounts payable?
We have a motion to approve the accounts payable. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Franchuk. Any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote. Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion pass. Park Board Commission items, is there anything that we need to bring to the full commission? I think it would be just prudent to report that we received an open bids on the livestock barn and we have taken those under advisement, subject to code review, and we will have a special meeting to deal with those in the near future. Anybody have anything else to add?
Do we want to roll in that discussion on the part-time?
That's probably, let's do that right here, good idea. So, go ahead, Commissioner White.
So, I was, I was looking at the part-time, a couple, I think it was last meeting we had, we made that from an intern position to a part-time position. I did notice that as an intern position, we didn't fully utilize her out in the, for 100% of her time. We also used her in the auditor's office as well. We had some discussion here about getting her, her applicator's license, if that's so what she chooses to do. I know with, also with the park being turned over to the, is it the city parks? And then, this is the last year we have any, anything on our lease for the Speedway, and maybe we should re, relook at that position.
To do what?
I don't know if it's, we can justify a full-time, part-time person or keep it open as a intern slot. Just open anybody else's thoughts on that.
I think there's plenty for her to do just at the fairgrounds if there's nothing else, over the summer months anyway.
Okay. And the reason I thought that is because it was mentioned that we did utilize her in the, in the auditor's office as well.
Well, I think it's a valid point. We've, we've talked about the shrinking of the footprint of our parks scenario and not that Bailey did anything specific or whatever on the other parks, but if we do, you know, ultimately, I guess, turn everything over on Lakeview to the city park and then depending on what happens out at the Speedway, if that's up in the, certainly up in the area. I, I think there's some, and I don't know long-term what her plan was, if this is just something until she completes schooling and then finds other employment, but I, I think those are all valid concerns on where, where this could all potentially go.
We're reducing our footprint, but yet we're going to put up a new building, so that's not going to be the same equation.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Might be a little bit more for her to do there.
Yeah. And so then, that, you know, kind of rolls into, is, is that a park? Is that an events area? And so, do you roll that into some, I, I think at some point we should have a discussion with the Fair Board, you know, because it's going to really kind of turn into an events coordinator position kind of as well. So, you know, nothing imminent, but I think before we do our budget this year, I think that we should have that discussion, so.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah. Do you know Lisa Bailey's long-term, I, you know, beyond 2025? Because I, I think at one time you had mentioned this was until she completes schooling and then potentially looks for something.
Yeah, she wants to use her degree and she's going into agriculture. You know, it's, it's hard to judge whether she would want to stay with the county or not stay with the county. You know, she obviously wanted to come to work here because she quit her job at Runnings and so, you know, based on us making that motion and doing that, so I don't know. This is something that she'll be doing over the next four years, so.
Okay.
You know, sure, her schooling, you know, will last that long, so.
And, and have we worked on the job description yet? I know that was something we discussed.
Um, I would imagine. Yeah.
And you totally control her time, Lisa, other than her being needed at the auditor's office?
Well, I allow her to work for the auditor's office. When the auditor's office asks for assistance, I say, yeah, let's figure out how we can do that. And we've done that for, we knew that we needed her for voting because we talked about that in the summertime with Karen and just talking about how, you know, she could assist and, and help out with taxes and whatever else, but my intention is not to have her in the auditor's office as much.
I agree with you, Corey. I mean, as far as expanding the footprint, you know, I do, at the same time, I still like the idea of having a little redundancy out there, you know, someone else that knows, you know, the facility and, you know, in the event that Lisa can't be there for whatever reason. Is it, is it, is it worth having a part-time person to do that? I, you know, I don't know, but we talked about possibly adding some duties if she wants to take on this, this spraying business, which is good, so.
Well, and with, with that, that's, that's one of the responsibilities, but also it frees me up to do grant writing and, and that's the stuff that I've given to our HR department is, okay, these are the things that I can have her do, these are the things that I can do, and it makes me more valuable to the county to be able to sit down and do that. And I've had those discussions with our auditor on helping the, even the smaller cities help gather their information to write these grants. We have this grant writer that's not writing grants because he says he's not getting the information he needs. I know the information that they need. And so, I can help with that, I can assist with that. I've had multiple conversations about that, and not just grants, but multiple things that frees me up to manage and to do the things that we need to do. It's up to you guys. If you guys decide you don't want her to be part of that, I think it should go back to the park board to determine, you know, what they need. But it is, it is good to have somebody else there as backup.
Okay. Can you work with Joetta by the next meeting in March to come up with a full dis, job description to present it to the commission so we can approve it?
Yeah, that, I assume that's what we were doing.
Okay.
She's already on boarded and in that position.
And that'll give you also.
As of the 27th.
That'll also give you some time to talk to Bailey as well.
About the spraying.
Correct.
Correct.
So, typical internships are a summer deal. They end in.
12 weeks is what we had it for.
Yeah, and that, that crossed into some of the election stuff, I get it.
Yep. And we were under the budget and I just kept making sure and verifying that we were under that allotted amount of dollars because we didn't know what this was going to look like when we entered into the internship and, you know, by the time they come in the intern stage, it's the end of May and we're already behind the eight ball trying to get everything done. And so, you know, naturally, I'm stealing people from the road department or wherever I can get help from because that's when you're trying to get everything all readied from the winter and some of the areas where it's crushed from the snow. We had to do that several times last year just due to the heavy snow or the year before, I guess it was. And just things like that, that somebody else could actually jump in that skidster or jump in that mini and take care of some of those things and then maintain all the way up there. Now, we're going to add three more buildings potentially. That's a lot of extra maintenance, extra setup, more use to the facility. And that's why in my, excuse me, in my evaluation, that was one of the goals that my supervisor set for me was to have a part-time person in place, and that's what we did.
Our part-time person's job description is morphing, you know, it, it's, it's more than what we initially, it kind of banked on.
So, I, I did have a comment about the auditor's office as far as usage, so Bailey did help during the general election and she was paid out of the election budget and it was after the fairgrounds was completely closed down and up for winter. And we have to hire people to come in and work in the office for elections. And so, we're talking, I think it was about 40-ish hours combined for her help in the general election. And then for the, the tax season, we do get a lot of taxes in and I asked Bailey to come, if she wanted to come in, put some taxes to get caught up with the mail. And there wasn't anything really going on and I called Bailey and asked her if she would come in and work under, this was under my auditor budget, under that budget, and it was for about, I think, three days. So, I don't want to say that usage in the auditor treasurer office would be justification for a part-time employee because that's, it's not like, we don't even have elections this year. It's not to that extent.
And I don't even have that in the job description. I mean, I'm always one that says, if we can help another department, let's help another department, no matter what they need. Let's try to help them and I will always be that way, but it is not in her job description to do any of that.
No. So, on the election workers, what, was there hourly pay?
Um, I want to say we had it at 17. Isn't that what we went up, is that what we went up to, Alana? Was it 17, 17?
And then, and Bailey in that role when she helped out, was she getting paid 17 an hour or was she getting paid?
Yes, 17. 17 an hour.
She's at 18 now.
Okay.
And then for the additional help during taxing time, same way?
We paid her the same 17 an hour based on because stuff wasn't decided for salary. Because it rolled over to 2025.
Okay.
Okay.
So, what the big difference is, is benefits. Right? That's the big difference here.
Mm-hmm.
Benefits.
Well, to, you said the, the intern position was full-time or part-time for?
It was full-time for six, or for 12 weeks was how we initially thought we would use it.
So, about how many hours was that position? So, I mean, if you go, I know that's not 40 hours a week out there, it's different, but.
Right.
If you had 40 hours at 12, that's 500 hours basically, and the part-time position would compose of up to maybe 1,000 hours, correct?
We actually did it as 1,040.
1,040 hours, so.
Yep.
Corey, where, where are you going with this?
Well, I, I know we, when we made the, the motion to bring her on part-time, add the benefits, the utilization was one of the things that caught my eye, being in the auditor's office. Second of all, having the city take over the parks and this is the last year, you know, we have any commitment from anybody out of the Speedway, what kind of roles and functions is she going to do as a part-time employee? We don't have a job description. We approved it to happen. I think we still need to have that job description brought to us so we can approve that. And I don't mind, I think, you know, the road department's helped out everybody, but sometimes when, you know, it's, it's like hiring staff for a building we haven't built. So, was, was one of my concerns.
Well, and the motorsports park is still going to have to be maintained.
Right.
Regardless of whether somebody's utilizing it or not. Will it need to be, because they, they right now take care of the track and those things, but the mowing and all of that will still have to be done.
As long as we own the property.
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, if we don't own the property at some point in the future, we're not going to go mowing for somebody else, so.
We wouldn't necessarily invest in time and money in getting her certified to spray if she was an intern, right?
Right.
It would be, if she was a part-time person, I mean.
Yeah, and but, and our weed board also, you know, they, they, I would assume all their employees are, are part-time, right? Are they interns or?
They're seasonal.
Seasonal?
Yeah.
Do we have anybody else that is seasonal, that works six months out of the year and then part-time in the winter or?
Road department.
Road department.
Has some seasonal. Well, they have some that.
They're, they're like late, they're, they're not necessarily seasonal. They're full-time except for like three-month period where they're laid off. But, so they don't get benefits during those three months, but they get benefits for the rest of the year.
And then, Lisa, what is yours when, when the activities in the summer, what do you, is your schedule in the winter? Same as it is in the summer?
Schedule?
Yeah.
Well, based on the discussion with Neil, it was, I'm required to work two days a week in the winter on an off-season, which would be basically November through March. But I can tell you I work more than that. And a lot of my consists of evenings and weekends.
Okay.
So, we're the real, I guess, it's, it's trying to, I mean, there's no doubt there's going to be plenty of work from, let's call it, May to September.
September, yeah.
It's those other months that we're, you know, potentially carrying a part-time employee.
Started in April, I mean, and sort of the weather's getting nice, just, you know.
Prepping to do.
Cleaning, cleaning up, you know, all the debris that comes in over the winter and just making the place look good again.
I think the comment that Commissioner White's doing is, let's utilize her. If we're under utilizing it, then we've, we, we may have not made the best decision. I'm, I don't want to put words in your mouth. But just so you and I are on the same page, Lisa, when we talked about this, when we went exempt, there was an acknowledgement that your schedule is much more condensed during the summer than it is in the winter and we, and that's probably a real good conversation piece for another item that was added to the agenda is just making sure everybody's getting the, the bang for the buck. So, yeah, I, I agree. So, we're going to get a job description for the part-time position. That'll come in front of us next month.
So, she was already put into this part-time position as of the 27th of January. So, are you now rescinding that?
No.
You guys don't want to do that? Because she needs to know so that she can get a, her job back.
I think the discussion was more meant to, for this job description to, to have some urgency in it, to make sure that her part-time duties are full and her plates, her, so that, you know, other departments aren't utilizing her in her part-time position. So, and, and we've, I'd like to justify that. And then, also the discussion of, you know, the two days a week off-season because you're so packed in the summer. Is there any documentation on that other than verbal?
No, I don't, unless Joetta put something in there. It was basically because I lost $10,000 in overtime wages on average for that timeframe and I was the, the highest one affected. The most other affected person would have lost $1,000, which they made up in their requests for.
And I, and I think I'm fine with that and I think maybe something should be put in your file because there's going to be other commissioners down the road, right?
Correct. And that was one of the questions that both Dean and Bernie asked me last year and it was just not known by them.
And I think if we can get something put in your file that states that, so next time there's, it's, it's brought up, you know, that you can note that there's something in your file stating that.
And just so everybody knows, when I, when I need to work more, I work more. And, and nine times out of 10, I am.
And I don't think anybody's questioning that at all. So, I mean, to protect you as an employee, I mean, there's a discussion that was had that, you know, so further down the road that somebody can come in and say that you weren't fulfilling your, your obligations in the winter months.
Right.
Okay?
Yep.
Okay. Anything else on that topic? I don't think any motion is needed, so we'll close that and.
Thank you.
Move on to the small city grant funding requests. We have two of them. Either Commissioner Claris or Karen, you want to give a report on the meeting that was held?
Well, I didn't get a chance to, to review everyone's scoring sheet, so maybe you could fill us in on that. Did, did, did the minimum criteria, was it met for? Well, we can start with the City of Taylor Water project. As far as the scoring from all the commissioners and yourself, did you score, Karen?
Um, I only scored the one. But I will say that the average score from what we got, it was to 100. From the scoring sheets that were turned over was 88 out of 100 to fund the Taylor Water project. But the funding amounts, the fund amount for that one, are, the work group overall approved for the City of Taylor in the amount of 89,4375. And that was to be paid out of the Small City Infrastructure Fund. The City of Richardson request, they had requested 267,90554, which was the amount, full amount that was available for the first year. That did receive an average score of 85 out of 100 points. But the comments were that the City of Richardson requested the 267,90554, but they only showed the matching criteria for 210500. So, the work group overall recommendation was approval for the City of Richardson in the amount of 210. recommendation was approval for the City of Richardson in the amount of two-ten, five-hundred, and that would also be paid out of the Small City Infrastructure Fund. That additional amount that they requested of fifty-seven thousand, four oh five, fifty-four, they can submit for once they turn in the documentation and the criteria is met for the matching.
Okay.
That's what I had for a synopsis.
So I think that through the process, I think there was, there was a lot of, lot of thought put into the criteria and the scoring sheet, and I, and I think it's like anything, I mean, you go through the process once, you find things that maybe, maybe should be a little different, or brings questions up, and I guess one question, I mean, we've got kind of two different projects here, City of Taylor's done deal, I mean, they're, they're pretty much completed, they were going out and doing this, you know, they had a lot of initiative, and they just went out and got this done, and, and, so I have no, no problem letting out the eighty-nine thousand and change to them, to the City of Taylor, but the Richardson project is just a little bit different, it's, obviously it's a great project, and it meets, it scores, it meets the criteria, it's just, I guess the question I have is, when is the money let out to them? Are we, are we last money in type situation here, or, you know, just, you know, the mechanics of actually getting the money to the City of Richardson?
Well, if, if you read, oh, go ahead, but if you read the criteria, we're not in first, we're in equal or last, right? So, I think there would have to be some proving mechanism that they've spent the two-ten, five-hundred, and then we could do that, certainly could.
It only makes sense to have.
Yeah, we can verify that through the auditor's office. In hindsight, once you look at these, I think our grant criteria, criteria was very fort, you know, thoughtful, and so I, I thought it worked well in these two particular.
You know, I just want to make sure that the project gets done, or gets started, you know, right?
Yep.
So Richardson did say, and so did, you know, and Taylor's is pretty much done, I think they're just doing some tweaks on that, Richardson did say that they would bring the updates to the commission, and they would provide accounting for, of those funds that were sent over by the county, so I can ask her if she can, you know, if, if she's able, I'm sure she could just provide us a ledger of that.
Just want to make sure there's some checks and balances here a little bit, so.
Yep.
That said, I'd make the motion to grant.
Do one at a time.
Yeah, from the city, I'll address the City of Taylor Water Tower Project first, I would make the motion to approve the eighty-nine thousand, forty-three dollars and seventy-five cents to the City of Taylor to come out of the Small City Infrastructure Fund.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second? Commissioner Franchuk, any discussion?
So, I didn't know if we were going to make a motion on this today or not, we're, so for the eighty-nine thousand, eighty-nine, forty-three, seventy-five, we have, the exercise was great, by the way, to go through that, so we have everything in from Taylor we need to approve that then, right now.
Yeah, Taylor was actually kind of a, I mean, they brought, they were here a year prior, I think, and so they really, I mean, some of the, you know, they did a really great job as far as documentation and putting that in front of us, so, I mean, they actually, I think they, they kind of helped me, you know, make the criteria and what they brought, they were really, really thorough, I thought, in, in their process, so, I'm satisfied with what they've brought to us, and I'm satisfied with the project that they've accomplished out there.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we will call for the question, Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, motion passes. Okay, Richardson.
Well, following the discussion, I'd make the motion to grant the City of Richardson for their sanitary sewer lining project, the amount of two-hundred-and-ten-thousand, five-hundred dollars, subject to some accounting.
Recede of appropriate.
Recede of, yeah, recede of their matched dollars spent, I guess.
And I'd second that.
Okay. Any further discussions or questions? Hearing none, Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to reports, Sheriff Lee.
Chairman Commissioners, good morning, you have my report, I'll stand for any questions on that, a couple of things I did want to touch on, there is a fentanyl brief I'd like to give you guys, I'll put that off until next month, just let you know ICE has been in town the past couple of weeks, working some operations, been in close contact with them, certainly if you have any questions about that, I can stand for those as well, our K-9 program is moving along well as far as the replacement of K-9 Jerry Lee, we will be sending Corporal Clatt to training in March, and he will be there for about two months, training with his new K-9, and will be back and ready before the summer hits, and we start hitting it hard there, and then also we had all-in training come in last week, maybe Joetta can touch on that when she comes up here a little bit too, but excellent with all-department training that involved all of our staff, and we did that Tuesday and Thursday of last week, so, four different groups, about three and a half hours each, and surprisingly, all the staff was impressed and raving about that training, so that's good. Any questions?
Any questions for the sheriff? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
County Road, Al?
Good morning, everyone, just a few things to report on what County Road's up to. Last week we had trucks hauling scoria from different locations throughout the county. With this nice weather, we've been keeping pretty busy, we somehow managed to bring up ten thousand gallons of Disafield trucking, so, we were kind of breezy, and now, today with it being so cold, we're repairing in the shop, we got our packers in, checking bearings and stuff, Fishers did finish at the Hindley pit, we moved out to the Stalker Dennis pit at the Speedway, we're crushing there, probably not this week as cold as it is, and soon as the weather straightens out, we're probably going to start the crack seal, get that done here before hopefully spring blading starts. One thing, you know, we've been replacing some of our trucks, and when we get them through Sourcewell, we were going to have probably four surplus trucks, and we're talking with Randy this morning, we're contemplating maybe just keeping a spare one, because it seemed like we've always got one broke down, that's just kind of nature of the beast, so my question would be, do we want to take them to an auction, we'd have to declare them surplus, or could we put them on seal bids and put them in on bid? You know, there's, we've got some plow trucks we probably replace and get rid of a couple old endums, we've talked about trading them off, but twenty-five-five, I think, is a little late for them trucks, you know, they're pushing three-hundred-and-eighty thousand miles, so, would you suggest maybe just put them on seal bids, partner in the shop?
Well, yeah, I mean, my only question would be, if you do a snapshot of value, you, the seller generally is at disadvantage, right, whether you do an auction or a snap, why couldn't you just put them out there for sale?
Sure.
You know, and I don't know if we have to sell, if we set a price, if we have to sell for that price, again, we're into.
We could put on reject annual bids, as the county deems best interest, so, you know, that's what we got an offer, and I think they're worth more than that.
And tractors are still hard to come by, even where I'm at, we're looking for tractors all the time, and you go to the Ritchie Brothers auctions, a lot of their tractors get swallowed up pretty quick.
And they're all automatic transmission, you make good farmer trucks, your kids and your wife could drive them in the field, so that's, that's really kind of a plus for them, so.
And the maintenance schedule on these is known, they're, it's good equipment.
Yeah, we've got maintenance schedule, we've got repairs from, since the day we bought these trucks that could go along with it, so, I guess if, if, we probably need a motion to put in the surplus, and then we could actually advertise them, we could.
Okay. What, do you have an idea, if you were to, what, what do you think they're worth?
Well, I'm thinking we should at least get over thirty for them. I know we had a dealer give us a price on these to trading, meanwhile, you know how it is when you trade things in, they got to make money too, so I, I don't know, I think there's some life left in the trucks, but, you know, we use our trucks pretty hard, so we just got to keep updating.
But you also maintain them very well.
Yes, they're very well maintained, we, we oil sampled faithfully every time we change the oil, anytime we change the oil, we get them oil sampled, so we have all them records.
If we're to do a surplus, do we need a list, though, itemized list to do it?
I could get that before the end of the meeting, I could get you the year models, they're all forty-seven hundred Western Stars, so.
You get some other equipment too besides those, or not?
Um, no, we've got some cattle guards, a few odd things we took out throughout the year, but we can do that later this spring, maybe take it to a farm sale somewhere, Sheffield, usually we take some excess stuff, but.
Okay, so do we need a motion to?
I think you got to declare it surplus.
Okay.
And I can get you the year models, I think they're.
We should draw some type of list that we're, what we're surplus.
Yeah, I can get that before the end of the meeting, because, and I guess if they said another month, but I think the sooner we get her out there comes springtime.
And they've all been replaced in the fleet already?
One more is coming, it, it's, I think it's built, it's somewhere floating around, then that'll be it.
Okay, so can I get a motion in that regard?
Or do we want to wait?
I'd like to see the list. Okay.
I can get you the list before the end of the meeting.
Yeah, we have a.
We have a bid opening with you at ten anyway, so.
Yep, I'll be here.
And then, we have a county road balance rollover correction as well, so.
Yeah, okay.
Just curious, what's the requirements to drive that, one of those trucks? Do you have to have CDL for those?
You have to have a CDL, but if you take it with an automatic transmission, you're, you're stuck with an automatic, you can't hop in a truck with a ten-speed or whatever.
And I think a lot of trucking companies are going that way, most, a lot of CDL drivers have just the Class A with automatic only on their driver's license, so they'll, you can't slip them into a seat where they'd have to shift gears.
These are dumps?
No, these are just tractors, belly dump pullers, and the reason why you want automatic, because number one, you get away from differentials, you get away from drivelines, clutch brakes, I mean, that drivetrain problem goes away when you got automatics, so, I'll get that list for you.
Okay.
And then we'll go from there.
Okay, thank you. Let's move into County Road Engineer Reports, Mr. Wood from Northern Plains, want to come in and get us up to date?
Sure, just one real small update, bid opening for the Hundred Thirty-first Avenue and Forty-Eighth Street, south of Bellfield, bids in about fifteen, twenty minutes here. Total project is about three and a half miles, our engineers estimate is seven-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars, and the Hundred Thirty-first is kind of a continuation of what we did last year, replacing that old bridge with a box culvert, so, that goes from Thirty-eighth Street down to Forty-eighth Street, which, which is south of the gas plant, and then Forty-Eighth Street is, I think it was from Hundred Twenty-fifth Avenue east about a mile and a half, so, total three and a half miles, but we'll see the numbers in twenty minutes or so, I think we'll get a lot of bids from what I'm seeing, which is good, so.
Okay, any questions, guys? Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeremy.
Mr. Krebs?
K L J? Hey, good morning, just to give you a quick update on our project, so the Roundabout Project, we did finish market analysis, and we put together the right-of-way documents, and then went over the pricing with Al, so we're, the next step is to reach out to the landowners and begin that right-of-way acquisition process, and then we're, we had previously submitted our draft environmental documents, so we're still waiting on comments back on that from the DOT. On the box culvert project west of South Heart, so Schwartz Construction's a contractor, they requested a, a pre-job for that, and they'd like to probably put the box in whenever there's some favorable weather here, and then we also completed a plat review for Mr. Josephson for the Schlicht Acres subdivision, is there any questions?
Anybody? Okay, thank you, Andrew. Mr. Katemis, is he, I see he's here.
Mr. Chairman, good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Brief update on the bridge removal project out there south of Bellfield, solicitations of views have been sent, most responsive, most of our responses have been received, our subconsultants are working on the Class Three and geotechnical reports, we will begin the environmental documents once these reports are received, designers are reviewing the terrain model for any pickup survey items, we are currently targeting a bid opening date of October tenth, twenty-twenty-five, the next earliest bid date for the DOT is in May, so we're hoping that they populate those and maybe put out some more bid dates, and we can get something a little earlier.
Oh, it's not for this, where are we at on the South Heart Bridge, that little bridge west of, South Heart?
That's all been bid, K L J is doing the CE on that.
Okay, okay. Anything else? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I do have a question for Al, so there's a bill being proposed that significantly reduces the ability of using eminent domain on public projects, are you familiar with that, where that's heading?
I am not, would probably be a good one to.
I know it's under the name of pipelines, but, or carbon pipelines, but it could affect, you know, public improvement projects as well, so, talk to Jenny and see where that is, and if you get something to us, I think that'd be awesome.
Okay, I'll do that, thank you.
Okay, we have ten minutes. Elena, can you sneak us in in ten minutes? All right.
It's, the bill is two-three-two-three, two-three-two-two.
Okay, Senate bill then.
Senate bill, I'm sorry.
Good morning, Stark County Emergency Manager, Elena Decker, just here to give you a quick report on January, so currently, everything is stable in the county, I was watching the roads yesterday and today, but everything looks good, January saw about fifty-one calls for the fire departments, mainly controlled burns, so, nothing too major, we did have a couple structure fires, one major one in Gladstone, which was a complete loss for the family, but I've been speaking to people over in that community, it sounds like they're really supporting them, so, they've got a good support system over there, so I'm glad. February is American Heart Month, so I just encourage everyone to learn CPR, or at least get involved with learning hands-only CPR, which is just calling nine-one-one and then just doing compressions, so, about three-hundred-and-fifty thousand cardiac arrests occur outside of the hospital setting every year, and seventy-three percent of those occur in homes, and then sixteen percent occur in public settings, so you are more likely to probably do CPR on somebody that, that you know, so I do encourage you to learn CPR, and then, because if you perform CPR on somebody, you double or even triple their chances of survival, and I have seen it happen, so I do know that it works, so, I just, during this month, I just encourage people to just engage in that kind of lifesaving activity, so, I think that was under ten minutes.
Awesome.
I do have one other thing.
Can breathe.
I know, I do have one other thing, I think it's a renewal for the Bowman Radar contract, it's in my budget, I have a line item for it, so I'm just asking for the approval to sign that contract again.
Okay.
So, other than that, I'll take any questions.
Any questions? If not, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion to approve that contract.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the contract, we have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, pose same sign, motion carries.
Any other questions for me? I was speaking really fast, I had a lot of caffeine this morning, I apologize.
All right, it is nine fifty, I'd prefer to have Joetta do hers together, but let's go do your tuition reimbursement application, quick.
All right, Joetta Piercy, Human Resources Director, good morning, we had one tuition reimbursement application for this period, and that was Jeremiah Kirkpatrick, he is our new information technology coordinator, and he is enrolled to get his master's in information technology management, so, I had that in your packet. So I had that in your packet. That is our only one for this semester.
Any questions of Joetta? And the application meets the criteria that we have set in our policy, correct?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve the tuition reimbursement application.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner White. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Franchuk, any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. We'll vote. All in favor, oh, do we have to do that?
It's probably roll call.
Let's do roll call. So Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. Thank you.
Can we make that quick resend?
Yes, I was just gonna have you do.
Since you're up there, the recommendation last month was on, and we had the discussion yesterday, and I don't have it in front of me. And I, I would like to resend my motion from last month on the match and adjust it to what is recommendation, recommended. And the recommendation was?
That we provide the same bent contribution benefit that we do to the new DC plan that we do to our current DB plan for the main employees.
And so I'd make that motion.
So do we have to have the same individual or same commissioner?
I think that was me.
Was you?
Wasn't it?
I don't have.
I made the motion. Bernie seconded.
Okay.
I'll resend my half of it.
Okay, so question, it's, you're, you're, I can't find it either, but your comment in the memo was, it has been recommended. Who made the recommendation?
It was in a payroll training on how to implement this plan. And it was, their examples were, you know, if you currently contribute this much in the DB plan, you should contribute this much in the DC plan. And since we contribute everything for the employee, even the employee, so there's buckets. You have an employer bucket and an employee bucket, and we contribute everything for the employee. So they said you should do the same for the DC plan, and that would be the Indy PERS was their recommendation.
So my only question on that was, all political divisions are treating the direct contribution plan differently now? I'm not saying it's different than the defined benefits, right? Okay, so is every political sub just rolling the benefits into the contribution? I, I guess what I'm saying is, we're at fifteen point two-six. If there's another political sub out there that's doing twelve point seven, I, I understand the, the urge or the wanting to match, you know, new employees versus seasoned employees. I'm just wondering, to me, there's a difference between suggestion and requirements, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I, I don't think it's anywhere in statute. They didn't say that. Because they can't tell you what, if you, you know, it's your choice whether you make contributions for the employee or not. And so that's why I think they, you know, suggest that you do the same. In my mind, these plans are totally different, so that's hard, but they just suggest treating them the same.
So my motion was last month at twelve point two-six percent employer contribution, and, but we, we're moving that up to fifteen point two-six percent?
Mm-hmm.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. And they still, the new DC plan, they still have to make their own decision and go in there and elect the three percent contribution into the DC plan or a four fifty-seven B plan, and then we will match that. But essentially, if they make the election with this new, you know, motion that you're making, we would put all the employer contribution of three percent and the match.
Can I also say something here, because I went through these emails. I have not had a chance to look at this video or talk to anyone from PERS, right? So I don't know. But in the legal world, there's a difference of may, shall, must, right? Lana's email says that when she's listening to the informational training video, they said in the video that we must pay the same percentage. That is much different than may, so that has to be number one. We'll have to take a look at that. We need to talk to PERS, and I also need to probably do some digging, but if it's a must or if, or if PERS recommendation or saying is a must, then I don't think you have an option.
Okay.
And, and Joetta, you watched the video yesterday, correct?
Mm-hmm.
And I have a link right here, and you, you set a time at the timeframe. I don't want this to go off here and alert everybody, but it says at the, did you put a timestamp on here?
Yeah, I think it was at forty-three minutes it starts talking about.
Forty-six minutes and thirty, forty-six minutes, thirty seconds.
Okay. And I, I wasn't, didn't have any time yesterday. I got this late. I will take a look at it and I will call over to PERS. But like I said, must is must, must is much different than may, so.
Well, my, the, the point of my question is, I know we are at the upper end of contribution towards retirement as a political sub. And I also know that the PERS is in financial trouble. And right now, the state's bailing us out long-term. They have enough money, they're gonna make contribution, tried to make that flush. But at some point, if that ever happens and it comes back to us, is there any risk to us as a political sub based on actions we're doing today somewhere down the road? So that's the reason for my question, is if there's other political subs doing some number other than fifteen point two-six, when is the time to address that so we don't block in and obligate further, further future commissions to having to bail the plan out? I know the defined contributions actually will hold and sustain itself. There is no, there's virtually no risk of going under. Where the defined benefit ones is in trouble, so that was the reason for my question.
And was there any feedback from, the, the, what was the feedback from Indy PERS?
The feedback from Indy PERS was that our organization, her email back to me is that our organization must pay the same amount of contributions for the defined contribution member as it does for the defined benefit member.
And who was on that, who, who sent that email?
That was Marcy Aldringer.
Oh, you might attempt to spend her last night. And, and her role?
Uh, she is in charge of the implementing those programs. I don't think her signature line says her exact role.
So Amanda, do you want us to wait on this?
Um, yeah, let me just do some digging and figure out what.
I, I will have a payroll starting on Monday next week that this will affect, so.
So can I make my motion as is and in case there is no correction?
Subject to.
Amanda's review?
Sure.
And, and it will help with this new plan. The first month, the only thing we contribute is the mandatory contribution, which we've already agreed to, the nine point two-six percent. And then the following month, because they have thirty days then to make this election, whether they want to do the three percent contribution and get the three percent match. So it doesn't go into effect until the following month, so we have a month.
So would you like to amend your motion as stated, Corey?
As stated to, once Amanda's approval.
Okay, Commissioner Marsh, you accept that on the second?
Sure.
All right. Any other discussion, comments? Okay, I think we'll do a roll call vote on this one as well. Commissioner White.
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh.
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk.
Aye.
Commissioner Clarice.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, it is ten o'clock. We have a advertised bid opening.
Amanda, are you gonna?
Yeah.
Do you have your letter opener?
I do. I do. That's my phone.
I was looking for you, the letter opener this morning, couldn't find it.
I'll just go see. Huh? There's a lot of them. Huh?
Shiny and new.
Yep. See what it comes up when it's all done. Do that Arizona or do that here? Across the street from Mills Building to the north.
Okay, we're gonna start our bid. We're gonna start our bid opening process for project CP forty-five twenty-three oh three. And it's for One Thirty-First Avenue Southwest and Forty-Eighth Street Southwest for grading in Stark County.
Are you doing these in order, Chris? Probably not.
Probably just the way they.
The way they're stacked up.
For our first bid, we have Edward Schwartz Construction. And their bid amount was seven hundred and eighty-six thousand, three thirty-seven, thirty-two. For our next bid, we have Bronco Brothers. Broncos Brothers bid comes to six hundred and fifty-six thousand, fifty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Our next bid is from Martin Construction. Their bid comes to seven hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-two cents. The next bid that we have is from Central Specialties. And their bid came to eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy-two cents. Next, we have Gladen Construction. And their bid came to eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars and ninety cents. Next, we have Gray Tech Company. Their bid came to eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-three cents. Eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-three cents. We have Knife River Materials. Their bid came to seven hundred and sixty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighteen dollars and seven cents. Hallibachuk Construction. Theirs came to six hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, oops, sorry. Six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents. Then we have Jensen, Jensen Brothers Construction. Their bid came to eight hundred and eighty-four thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents. Okay, and then this is the one we will be conducting. Do we need to say that? We have Wilson Construction. Their bid came to eight hundred and sixty-eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and fifty-three cents. We do have one bid from Picard Excavating that we cannot open or accept as it does not have the addendum acknowledgement attached. And that is all the bids, and we're gonna hand them over to Jeremy. And he will check to make sure they're good.
Yeah, if Mr. Heiser and Mr. Jeremy would review those.
Neil, if I interrupt, I'd like to thank all your contractors that put in the bid. One thing, if you look at this bid tabulation, our engineer figured it pretty close because there's really no, I mean, they're right in there, so that's kind of what we looked for, and once again, thank you for your effort to put in the bids.
Okay, we'll take a quick, uh, ten-minute break, and then we'll come back for the abatement hearing, uh, scheduled for ten-thirty.
Ms. Wunder.
Yeah, so the letter that went out in, early in the year, went out at 330,600. In April, the sale closes at 260,000.
Yep.
And, uh, I'm trying to figure out where, so they've changed the previous year value to 298?
The 2023 value was 298.
Got it.
Yep. And so, when I was talking to him, I, you know, I told him that was an option that we could, that my office could do was go to the 298, the previous year's versus the 330,600, but I can't just go to 260 because we didn't have that sale. We're going, we're looking at something that we didn't have at the time of our assessments. And he wanted to go ahead and file the abatement form for the 260, asking for the 260. And so that's where we're at.
Okay.
And the city of Bellfield has agreed the 298?
They went back to the last year's assessment of 298, yes. On a three to two vote, so I, I'm not sure.
It was still a win.
Yep, it was still a win, so.
I guess my question would be, if they prorated taxes in April 30th of 2024, what was the, uh, valuation, you know what I mean? Because if we approve any change in valuation, this is going 100% towards the current ownership, correct?
Correct.
So. I, you know, might not be a big deal, but there's four months' worth of taxes there.
Right. Yep. I did not do the estimated sheet for what entity gets what amount. I think I sent it to Cindy at the city of Bellfield, but I didn't print it for you guys.
Any questions, thoughts? Bellfield's actions were to rescind, or deny the application to go to 260, but to amend their previous valuation to 298,000. That's the city of Bellfield's approved, okay?
Take it back to the original 298.
Which was 2023's value, yes.
So I'd make a motion to agree with Bellfield's 2023 value of 298,000.
And I'd second that.
Okay, any further discussion, comments, questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion to change the 2024 valuation to 298,000? Say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Let's go to the road superintendent job description, add salary data, et cetera, Jueta.
All right, Cory and Dean and I got together and discussed the job description. And I had gotten some sample job descriptions from probably about eight other counties. And I asked, you know, how their structure was set up. And I was mainly interested in those that had a county engineer and a road superintendent. And so, they sent me that information. And based upon that, we revised the job description a little bit, and the experience. We were looking at two years post-high school education and drafting engineering, construction management, our closely related field, and then five to seven years of related experience, including two years of supervisory. And you could have an equivalent of both of those. So, they don't have, if, if they don't have the education, they at least need the experience type of a thing, okay? So, that was one of the changes we made, added a lot of job duties in there of everything that Al does, and maybe wasn't in the job description. And then that's how we came up with the job ad. The salary, we came up with 90,000 as a starting wage rate. This is about the average salary of road superintendents throughout North Dakota. Um, it's right at 89,000. Our midpoint range is 95,596. So, that, we thought that could, would give us a good leeway there for somebody, depending on the experience that they had. Anything else that you want to add, Cory or Dean?
So, I know that we had some discussions about a PE. We only have two co, two projects. I don't know if we can justify a PE quite yet for Stark County. The PE salary, on a lot of those PEs, we're overseeing the road superintendent anyway, correct?
Correct.
Uh, and what was their salary range on a PE?
Uh, I, we don't have that on our salary surveys, but I think it's, actually McKenzie County has both, they have a PE and a road superintendent, and they are two separate departments. And they had it on theirs as 95,000, I think.
For the P.
But all the PEs, all the engineers needed four-year bachelor's degrees. And they did other things like surveying, you know, which then you're going to have to have a survey crew, or people that can do that, and.
Yeah, my concern is just how far into this engineering?
Right, exactly.
Yeah. I mean, and how does it affect our relationship with our other engineers?
Hmm, correct.
And we have three, four other engineering companies that we work with that do a great job for us, so. The salary range is at 90,000. And that, is that on the bottom end of it, from what you've got, or is it right in line?
That's an average, that's an average, I would say, yeah. Kind of a midpoint of the current county superintendents out there. Mm-hmm. But that.
What's the top end of your range that you've got then?
The top end of our salary range is like 100, I mean, if you want to go to the max, you mean? I mean, it's not like we would hire somebody there, though. I was, I was kind of, when I said our midpoint range, because usually.
Midpoint range is 96.
Yes, yeah, so, kind of in my mind, I was thinking, you know, it might be somewhere in between there.
Well, to go back to the discussion on the PE, I, you know, extracted a few numbers from Karen, I mean, the one reason I'd mentioned PE, and I agree, I mean, it's not, I'm not sure we're quite ready yet either, but, you know, we're, we're spending at the county level in that range of, you know, 300K a year.
But look at how much time that is invested that they are doing work, which is going to take away this man's job from what he should be doing.
No, and I, I, I agree with that, it's more of a super, it's, you know, one of the big jobs or big parts of this position is managing vendors. And, you know, just thought it might be a decent idea to have someone that, you know, can speak that language a little bit, you know? So.
So I guess, uh, what we're looking for here, after the discussion was had for the road superintendent and the feedback from Mr. Franchek, myself, and Al, and working with HR, to approve this, uh, job announcement for the road department, so that we can soon find a replacement for Mr. Heiser.
I do have a question about the, I was just looking at the job description, there isn't a line in primary duties and responsibilities, and I just want to, the rationale coordinates work to be done at the county parks with the park director, or park board director.
Do you want to speak to that?
I can bring that up, because if there's something needs to be done, something welded, just that, so they have, I know years ago, the county made a motion to, anything that needs repaired, to send a road, so there's that, we've still got that option if something breaks and something needs fixed, or we need a load of gravel hauled or something. So that communication link is still there, that's the only reason.
Well, it's been brought to my attention, like I said, I know it's a little bit of a subject that no one wants to talk about, but at some point, we have to start accounting for dollars spent out of the road department, supporting the park or the, the fairgrounds. Um, and I'm not quite sure how we do that, I mean, if that time's being accounted for. And, like I said, it's, I mean, am I in agreement, if we can do it, I mean, we should help each, I mean, we should have sort of a cohesive type thing here, but at the same time, I mean, we've got a road department budget, and we have a parks department budget, and it's like.
I, I agree with you on that, I mean, maybe we can work on, uh, for the road department, you know, what each individual, what it is where we have a labor loan program, you know, where it's okay, and then it just, there's monies that switch back, because that's the only way you're going to account for it.
Yeah.
Is it?
And we don't even have to necessarily do it money-wise, but there should be a reporting mechanism, right now it's just so easy, something needs to be done down there, um, Al sends somebody down there to do it, I don't care if it's leveling, cleaning the parking lot, welding a, a chute, or doing some routine maintenance, but I think it would be just kind of natural in this transition, because that position has grown over time, or that facility has grown over time as well, is just say, hey, part of your monthly report is a road superintendent, say, we've, we did this at the, we've sent, we've sent the road department up to the Heritage Museum and had them do stuff for us up there, that's good to know.
This be on labor only, or equipment as well?
Just some kind of reporting mechanism.
Should be some hours tied to it with equipment and whatnot, like I said.
What, a dollar amount? I mean, that's what I'm kind of, I'm aiming at here.
Yeah.
You know, for one individual, it's.
That would be fine, I don't want it just to be so cumbersome, uh, you know, that kind of stuff, so if Randy goes down there, that's different than if somebody else goes down there, right? So, I think, just some kind of platform that we get accountability, that, that's where I'm at.
Okay.
So.
I'd like to make a comment to Paul's question there, you know, yes, we go out there and help, but, I mean, if we want to start worrying about road budgets, I think we should worry about cleaning the parking lot off for the cordials, charging them, cleaning the parking lot off for social services, we go up to the LEC, so, I mean, there's other things we do, I mean, so if we really want to get.
Well, ultimately, I mean, people are concerned, I mean, it's one of the biggest budgets we have, and there needs to be some justification for it.
But I'm just saying that's, you know, there's ways to look at it.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, here's my question on the advertised, um, starting salary. Uh, there's been discussions about potentially taking some of the administrative responsibility and delegating it to, uh, in-house, current in-house Todd. And I guess my concern is, is if, if we do some of that, and take some of the administrative responsibility that Al does, does naturally, uh, and transfer it, and we're still advertising at a $90,000 position, and typically, if you look at our history when we do department heads, the biggest raise is after year one, right? They may exceed the, if we do 3% countywide, the department head year one, at the end of year one, gets, exceeds that. And I think we've gotten to a position, if we start this at 90, all of a sudden, in a couple of years, we're paying the same amount of money for a three-year county road superintendent that Al is at 20, 21 years. And I don't, I, I just, I don't think that's, I don't think we're going to, uh, reduce the amount or the attractiveness of this position by putting a lower number in there. That's, you know, we, we still go up, so if you get the perfect applicant, you make an offer that's higher, or you negotiate a salary, but I think once you set that floor, I, I, I think that's a little, uh, dangerous, risky.
Yeah, do you have a suggestion based on the salary data?
So if we put it at 85, that's.
That's the number I had in mind.
Is around, uh, forty point, forty dollars, eighty cents an hour, starting.
Now, if this person's over all the other people, though, you are going to have a situation where you're going to have a person that's working there as a foreman, who is going to make more than the person that's their boss.
Sometimes that's an okay thing.
That's not the end of the world, sun will still come up tomorrow.
Well, I mean, you can't.
Unless they're overseeing them, then that creates an equity issue.
I, I've been in that position multiple times, where I've had employees make more than me.
Yeah, I'm just going, that, that's, if I can't weld, and if I can't do this, and if I can't change a tire, and I can't, you know, change a drive shaft.
And you directly oversee them?
Yeah, I do. I have two guys right now that made more than me last year.
Okay, but that's with like overtime and everything else, like.
Yeah, yeah.
You're talking about an exempt.
I could see on the paper, I mean, there's a guy that is, would be actually right at 87,000 in our employment, how many years does he have invested here? He's at the end of his, his career.
And we'll have to look at our applicants and see how many years they, you know.
But are, you're not going to make, if, if you only get one applicant, and it's kind of, mm, but we need somebody, then all of a sudden, you've advertised the position at 90, how are you going to go in and add, and, uh, offer the position at 85?
We can offer lower, I'm just saying, we do have to look internally, too.
To further muddy the waters. So, I'm 100% in favor of us posting this to the public and getting outside applicants, but we actually, we know that we've got, our current assistant is there, Cody, right? And, um, and we've got Todd there, has there been any discussion, or is, can we have some discussion about possibly splitting this road superintendent? I know Todd's not going to be there forever, but it would maybe, possibly, it could be a situation where they could dual-roll this, I know Todd's pretty handy at the administrative side, I know Cody's pretty handy at what he does as well, um, but Cody's probably not quite ready for the whole administrative side thing yet, I mean, he needs to get some more grain as well, give us a little bit more time, just throwing it out there.
And I also, we also got to look at the market we're in, right? And southwestern or north Dakota, you know, the, the industry that's already here, uh, there's a lot of individuals that oversee a lot of heavy equipment out there, uh, in the private sector as well, but, uh, it might be hard at 85,000 to attract somebody.
They already make that without being a supervisor, sometimes.
Well.
Yeah, but that's the environment that.
That's, that's not the point, the point is, is that we could go a period of time without, I mean, the wheels are, everything's fine-tuned, the way it's going, we don't have to have this position filled by March 21st, um, we could go a period of time without it. And my point is, if we start at 85, and we don't get applicants, then we redo it at 90, or whatever it is, um, I just.
One comment I would have to say is not, I'm fully aware that an $85,000 job in Dickinson, North Dakota, and the Bakins, dime a dozen. But, those conditions that they worked to get that 85,000 is far different than what they're going to get at the county, I'm not saying that you guys.
There's difference in benefits, too.
Yeah, I'm not saying that you guys don't have some rough conditions once in a while, but the oil fields is a totally different animal, and this is home every night, good benefits package, um, so.
Most of the time, it's four days a week.
Four days a week?
Yeah, so good hours.
If you like fishing, it's a good, good job.
So, let's, I think we all can agree on the job, uh, announcement, so I will make the motion, uh, the job announcement, job announcement to be put out at a salary range of 85,000 and up to, and up, and up depending on experience.
Okay.
Does your motion include the rest of the packet as you guys put it together?
Correct.
Cause I still, I still question the, um. Why is my mind in a blank right now?
The internal employees?
The what?
The internal employees, the structure?
No, the, um. Like, Northern Plains, I mean, the, um. Huh? Yeah, the engineering part, I'm sorry, I went so blank, I mean, is that, how important is that to have as far as part of the, um.
I, I think at this point, there's no interest in doing the.
Because that's part of what it is, the job description now.
Uh, no.
No, it's overseeing the engineers.
Oh, okay, well, that's part of.
And we are, have some requirements as far as education, but you know what, this is, nothing's prohibiting, uh, a PE, or someone with that skillset to apply as well.
Correct.
You know, so.
So I just thought that there was part of the job description is they had to have that education, and I didn't think, know if that was that important or not.
So my motion still stands.
Yep, and, okay, we have a motion, uh, to accept the, uh, job announcement, uh, opening for the road department, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Franchuk. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing none, um, do we have a, it's under discussion, so, when would you close that? Did I see that in here?
Uh, February 24th, I think it was.
Okay, so you're going to be out for three weeks?
Three weeks.
Can we do it, can we just say March 1st?
It's February 25th.
25th.
Okay.
Just say March 1st, close it, and then we can still fit it into our March meeting.
That makes sense to me.
Okay, well, I suspect there'll be some interviews and to be scheduled once that window closes.
It's just done, okay. I mean, if, it, that's fine, it'll slow down the hiring, but if, I mean, if we're not in a rush anyway, then that's.
Well, seven days ain't good enough.
Yeah.
So, okay, we have a motion, second, the changes to the announcement were to change salary offered to 85,000, and change the deadline to, uh, March 1st. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Jueta.
All right, let's just stay there, Jueta, do the training and development policy.
Yeah, the, uh, this kind of goes along with the application that I presented earlier. Now that we've had this program for a couple of years, um, suggestions in administering it for the tuition reimbursement part, um, I think, we've only done applications, accepted them once a year for like the last two or three years. And, um, I think it would be good to accept them more times during the year, I'm, I had suggested three times a year, so we would accept them in January, May, and September, so that would give people an opportunity. So that would give people an opportunity to put in an application for maybe each semester that they do. Cause it wasn't clear to everybody when they applied in January that it could be for the whole year for, you know, if they did two semesters or what have you. So I think this would just make it a lot clearer. And the other thing that would make it clear is if we just, instead of reimbursing up to seventy percent of the improved costs with a minimum, with a maximum of fifteen hundred, to just say that we would reimburse up to fifteen hundred dollars to any one employee per application. So for instance, the one you just approved, it's clear, it would be clear that Jeremiah would get fifteen hundred dollars up to if he had expenses of that for this application or this semester.
I did have one question. Your tuition reimbursement, page two, uh, number five on the bottom.
Uh-huh.
A grade of C or equivalent is required for reimbursement. Who grades this?
This school.
The university or whatever.
Don't do it as far as.
No, no, no.
As far as we're, we're like seeing if it's whatever.
So I think a lot of.
So they count flunk and still get.
Lot of organ, organizations that offer tuition reimbursement do, uh, ask to review credit, uh, credit card statements, no, uh, your, your GPA. So in order to continue funding you.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions on the, uh, proposed changes in training and development policy? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the changes.
I'd make that motion.
Uh, do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Okay, information systems service request policy.
Yes, um, we're just catching up here, um, to formalize the process that we use to, um, request service for our computers or access or things along that line. The old policy, um, of course, first we worked with consolidated, um, and now with our own I T coordinator and department, we can, we want that to be the primary I T support. So people would contact I T support at Stark County and D dot gov, put in our work order. They can also contact by office phone and, um, Jeremiah now has a cell phone too. So those are the changes there.
Okay, comments, questions?
I'll make a motion to adopt the information system service request, uh, with the updated information.
So the copy I have in my packet is that, you, you know, you have the redline version up there. I'm assuming the one I have is the new policy as recommended. Yeah. Yeah, without the redlines.
Oh, okay.
Right. Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Any other questions, comments, concerns? Hearing none, will vote. All in favor of the, uh, recommended, um, information system service request policy change, signified by saying aye.
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 Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Let's go to, yeah, Karen, let's go to the county road balance rollover correction.
So I, I included in your packet, um, you'll have to do on the computer. Um, an explanation here that after reconciling the twenty-twenty-four county road balance, balances, I realized there was an error on the balance transfer sheet that I had done for the January fourteenth meeting. In order to correct that error, I need, um, for the commission to rescind their motion that was made at the January fourteenth meeting. And then I did write out the new motion to correct it. Um, the original motion was made by Commissioner Marsh and seconded by Commissioner White. And, um, so we have a balance, a transfer of, and I don't know if somebody wants to read this, but we need to make zero out, um.
Twenty-one twenty?
Yes. So we're trying to zero out twenty-one twenty county road and organized. And I had in that meeting that we were, we had four hundred and fifty-five thousand eight eighty-nine that we were adding to the combined bridge, but it's actually a negative balance. So in order to correct that, we need to zero that out by taking funds, and this is what I did. Took funds from county road and bridge to zero out county road and organized. And then we took the funds that were left over and combined them all and did a transfer over to our combined road fund for twenty-twenty-five. But yes, I, I know, but road is not gonna be happy because that's much.
Where did it go?
They got excited, um, but that is my fault and I just want to correct it. It's corrected on our accounting side. I need it from the commission.
It was a, a symbol error on the sheet.
Yeah. Commissioner Marsh?
Yes, I would rescind, I would rescind the county road transfer motion made on January fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five at the commission meeting.
And I'd accept that.
Okay.
Okay, to make the new motion.
Well, let's, let's vote on the.
Oh, yeah, that's right, that's right.
Let's rescision. Any questions, comments, concerns? Since it is a money item, we will vote by roll call. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. New motion.
New motion would be to accept a transfer of four hundred and fifty-five thousand eight hundred and eighty-nine dollars from the twenty-one fifty-five county road um, and bridge to the twenty-one twenty county road unorganized to zero the balance. Also for the transfer of the five million, six hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eighty-nine dollars and seventy-eight cents, county road and gr, county road and bridge remaining balance and the farm-to-market road remaining balance of three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and eighty-five cents to the new combined twenty-one fifty county road fund for twenty-twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Commissioner Claris. Any other discussion, comments? Hearing none, we will do a roll call vote. Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner White?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, uh, employee benefits salary study group. We talked, um, we talked a little bit about it last month, but we didn't actually do any formal action. And so the concept, if you remember, was to put in a, uh, perspective of identifying uh, salaries, benefits, all these kind of things in a collective kind of big picture, um, idea rather than just deal with, when we'd go through budget, just deal with salaries and then just deal with, um, in, insurance benefits and just deal with, uh, these other things. And so it was, uh, my wish to, uh, appoint, uh, commissioners. Can't remember who I even talked about. I know, uh, H R would have been one of them and.
Myself.
It would have been you. I know it was Karen, it was Joetta and one other commissioner. Help me.
Excuse me, I had Paul written down.
Okay. I think that's, I think that's right.
Calendar invite for the eleventh?
Yes, yes.
Okay. And so I would like to add the conversation to that con, uh, or the, uh, item that Commissioner White brought up earlier, where we try to develop a policy on, uh, department head time accountability. Uh, so we, I think there's been some ideas thrown out there. I know this is a benefit study, but I think at the same time, we could have some discussions on how we address that issue. Would that be acceptable to the, uh, individuals who are on that?
Yeah, we can add that to our agenda.
Who's all in the committee now?
It is Joetta, it's Karen, Cory, and you.
Okay.
And then I had invited, um, any department heads that were interested.
I think initially probably let's stay away from that until you guys come to a collective, uh, idea and then bring that to the department head and then some, at some point, bring that back to us. It doesn't have to be next month. I'm thinking April, May, as long as it's done prior to, uh, our starting of our budget process.
I think that that's fine. Go to back onto my point, uh, the department heads account for their time, uh, and communicate. Uh, there has been some feedback that you've sent out an email, Joetta. And I guess, why she's here, can we just talk about it?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Some of the feedback you've gotten.
I had, um, sent out a questionnaire, um, both to, um, the commissioners on, you know, what are your expectations and to the department heads and, um, you know, how they, um, let their commissioners communicate basically with their commissioners when they're out of office or not here. And, um, so I've compiled that data. We're doing a lot of the same things, but, um, I just think the expectations aren't maybe clear, you know? Because this was kind of new to department heads in the last probably four or five years, I would say. Before, I think they just did their own thing and didn't necessarily, you know, they will let the office or whatever know if they're sick or not gonna be in, but nobody else, basically type of a thing, so.
And, and some of the feedback, my feedback was a shared calendar, you know, to, to see, uh, when you're in and out of the office utilizing the calendar. I know a lot of people don't utilize the calendar on their Outlook, right? I'm a little older, so I still like my Outlook calendar. I, I use it for everything. Uh, I know I also, uh, made a mention of using Teams. Uh, we don't have Teams fully yet, correct, Jeremiah? No. We will be getting Teams though, correct? Okay. And with Teams, you can share files, so anybody can, uh, account for their time however they want. And they can put that file on the shared, uh, and, and you can give permissions, people can make changes, you cannot allow changes. But Teams seems like a very good avenue to use as well, uh, for that, uh, documentation. Uh, cause, uh, you can see documents there and then you can give permissions, who wants to open them and who does, who can and can't. And then therefore that document, whoever department head is, however they want to track their time or account for their time, uh, can use any, you know, whether it's Excel, a Word document sheet, whatever, however they want to do it. And it's, uh, and it's right there to open up and people can, can utilize that as well.
Good input. Um, the only other item that I would ask the committee to, uh, put in their thinking cap is we have caps coming to us, whether we like it or not. And so projections, future projections about what, uh, the, since it is our largest, uh, expenses, payroll and benefits, that we're gonna have to confine and fit into that, uh, that slot, uh, on, on caps. So I would hope that that would come in your discussion and how we potentially address that, so.
And I'll just hand this information out to all of you, so you all know kind of what our committee. One of the first things that we were going to do when we met on the eleventh was talk about different types of compensation models, the pros and cons to each, you know, what we currently use, maybe what other counties use. And it, it would be a discussion on what direction we want to go to. So, um, my thought was the more people in that discussion, the better. So that's why I invited any department heads that were interested, because usually people that are interested will be proponents to a program and they will move it forward. So that was kind of my thought. We even had an employee that was interested that had gone through this process before and invited her. So I don't know if you're willing for us to still meet as a group.
I would defer to the committee at that point. I'm just saying is that we have, uh, two, two levels of discussion and that sometimes if, if you start where, where you're talking about starting, it might not take the path that we as the, uh, people, uh, responsible for some of this stuff, um, needed to go. But that's fine. It's, I'll, I'll defer to the discretion of the committee.
Also that, you know, before we had a committee too, it was dealing with longevity. Is that can be part of this group now or?
Well, I think if, if they're gonna make a recommendation to the full commission, then yeah, if we are, you know, I think the comment was widely made, our longevity program is, 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 is not good and let's replace it with something, um, different, so. And I think you could invite outside, you could, you know, invite other H R, you know, see if the city of Dickinson's H R would come in and sit down with you and share their thoughts. I think that would be appropriate conversation as well.
Paul and I talked about that and I visited with Shelley a little bit.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, last item on the bit, on the business is portfolio reports. I've been kind of advocating for this for, uh, for a while. And you have in front of you, you know, kind of a sample. Natalie was, uh, good enough to, at my demand, to put a, uh, portfolio report together for her first quarter and basically, uh, tells what, uh, her responsibilities are, um, what, uh, they've done and those kind of things. I, I think it's pretty informative and that's kind of the blueprint or model I was looking for from, um, from other portfolios or department heads, so. Any feedback or thoughts on that?
Going for, you want it written out or so it's part of the record or can we have, you know, a verbal conversation or updates?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to whatever. I'm just saying, you know, we up as five up here based on quorum conversations and those kind of deals, a lot of times we don't know what's going on in each other's.
Yeah.
And we're in charge of the entire county, so I think it's appropriate that we kind of have at least a grasp of what's going on.
Like it, yeah.
So Natalie, you passed the grade for the first quarter, so you'll be.
And this is gonna be quarterly reports?
I would think quarterly would be sufficient on most of the departments. I don't think we need to be monthly and maybe some of them even could be semi-annually, uh, just something consistent, whatever that is.
After everybody period, that'd be pretty boring.
Yeah.
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 Pretty uneventful.
Yeah, so.
Depending on the portfolio, I guess.
Yeah. Okay, anything else to come before the board?
He's gotta get his.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Gotta award the, award the bid.
Yeah, so just to follow up from the, uh, the bid at Tan. Ten bids were received and tabulation was done and the as-read bid of six hundred and forty-eight thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and eighty-two cents was verified to be low. That was submitted by Liebichek Construction. So I would recommend awarding to, um, that company. They've done other work for the county in their reputable contract, so I would recommend awarding to the, to the low responsible bidder.
So I'll make that motion to reward the contract to Liebichek Construction.
So should we put the, you want to put the CP forty-five in there?
CP forty-five, twenty-three oh-three.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner White. Any discussion? Hearing none, will roll call vote. Commissioner Franchuk?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, White?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Claris?
Aye.
Commissioner, uh, chair votes aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
And I think we're still waiting for, uh, correct, the units, the tractors?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, the tractors that, there's two two thousand fifteen Western Star forty-seven hundreds and two two thousand sixteen's. And there might be some other stuff we come up with, but that'll be called spring to surplus, like some cattle guards and some miscellaneous stuff that we use.
So are you gonna identify the one you want to retain at this point or how are you gonna handle that?
I'd like Randy to do that, cause he knows the history of them. Let's just put down, um, I guess, keep a sixteen back, put just three of them down.
Yes, sir.
Two fifteens and a sixteen.
Okay.
I make the motion then to put the other three tractors as surplus equipment.
Put them out on bit.
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh, all in favor of, uh, the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, motion carries. Thank you.
Chairman? See, I made mention of Corporal, Corporal Clatt traveling to Minnesota for the, uh, K nine stuff. So we can get the W S I stuff going. Can you guys approve that out of state travel, please?
I'll make the motion for Deputy Clatt to travel to Minnesota.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Marsh. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All right.
Motion, opposed, same sign, motion carries. Thank you. Any other business to come before the board?
Yes, uh, just want to give a quick kudos to my detective staff, which I should have done in my report. They were working a child pornography case in Bellfield. They were working a child pornography case in Bellfield, which led back to, I won't get into all the details, it's still under investigation, but it led back to Tennessee. In the course of this, they discovered a seventeen-year-old boy who had been, uh, essentially locked in a homemade prison cell in his house and beaten and malnourished and, uh, even in Tennessee, it was something they'd never seen before, so, uh, very troubling situation. But, uh, thanks to the, uh, investigation, uh, work they did, he was able to be obviously removed from that, uh, situation in his home, so. It's nothing but steel walls and a blanket in the room and, uh, appeared he had been beaten with a pipe and not fed, so.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Not entertain a motion to adjourn?
Make motion to adjourn.
Second. I'll second the motion, everybody say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, meeting adjourned, thank you.